This meeting is being recorded.
Are we ready to go, Aaron? Is Kurt in?
Kurt is here. John, are you ready to go? We are good to go, Mayor.
Okay, thank you for joining us today. Kurt also is absent, but he's in excuse absence because he's under the weather. And he is attending via Zoom, but he's not here physically, but he is here virtually, so. And he in advance has said he's going to recuse himself from voting on item four. Because his office is in Burt Brothers Tire Store, so he feels like that means he doesn't want to be perceived as having a bias one way or the other, although I know he likes it there. So with that, let's get started. Kurt, is Kurt able to speak?
Yes, we will speak.
Okay, would you be willing to offer our invocation tonight?
I'd love to. Our infirmers, we come together as a community tonight for our city council meeting, reclaiming the blessings we have, past deeds we've all done good things to any of those, any blessings we have. And then, Father, as we enter the Christmas season, ask what's going to happen those of our communities who might be living through it, could be a sickness, or have other ailments going on, those who might need the evidence, that you might, if you're this as a community, know how to reach out to them and help water them up. If this is a council tonight, just definitely decisions to discuss that we might have ahead, those things that we've just thought about as a community, that we might help make our community a better place. And this is our prayer in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Brittany, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now have time for unscheduled public appearances, so if anybody is here that would like to speak to any issue, you're welcome to step up to the podium and do that. Aaron or Kelly, if you're watching, is there anybody online that would like to make a comment?
There's nobody on Zoom, and I don't think we have any viewers on YouTube at the moment either, Mayor.
Okay, well, then hopefully the viewers on YouTube will be the ones that watch the meeting afterwards. Let me interject one public comment. This is our last meeting of the year, and I just want to thank staff and council for a great year. I think we accomplished a lot this year, certainly a lot with roads. We went through a crisis, we're still in one, sort of. And I think staff and council and residents have been remarkable in how they've cared for each other, and I just want to give them an early Christmas wish on my behalf. And again, thank all the council members and staff for everything they've done to make this a really good year. It's weird that December 1st is our last meeting of the year. It snuck on me really quick, so I didn't have a chance to do some things I might have wanted to do. And I forgot our meeting today, so it's just, it just, life sneaks up on you. But thank you again for everything that you've done to make this a great year. I think we have three freshmen council members, and they've, they're all on a steep learning curve, but they, they're doing really well, and I appreciate all of them. All right.
Mayor, I'd like to second that.
Okay, second that. It's not a formal motion, but we're all in agreement that we're appreciative of each other, so thank you. Thanks, Scott. Presentations, I don't see anyone from youth council here. Oh, sorry, I can't tell how old you are, I thought you were much older. So come up and educate us. You're too tall, sorry.
Thank you. So for the youth council activities this month, we-
Can you state your name first?
Sorry, yes, my name is Ryan Bartholomew, nickname is Cougar. So for the youth activities that we did this month, we did a food drive that we donated all the proceeds to Tabitha's Way, and that was very, that was very successful. There were a lot more donations than we actually expected. It was, so yeah, that was a very successful food drive. And then also, I believe yesterday, yesterday or a few days ago, we did a Zoom meeting with the, with the police officers, and we, a lot of the youth council members were able to ask questions and have concerns resolved, and we were able to meet a lot of our first responders and get to know them a bit better, and so that was really fun.
So Brian, do you concur, that was a good meeting? He's nodding, he's thumbs up, double thumbs up. Okay, awesome. Hey, council, do you have any questions for Cougar? I don't, thank you, you guys did remarkably well, your projects have all been superb this year.
Thank you.
And they've been much better than expected. I thought the senior dinner was remarkable, I thought. Tabitha's Way is a wonderful organization, and I'm sure they appreciated it, what you did for them. So thanks for all the stuff you did this year.
Thank you.
Should have included you in my motion. Scott will do an amended second, right?
That's a second, Mayor.
All right, consent items, we have one item on consent. It's a purchase contract for a front end loader, it's ratification of an emergency purchase that was made already.
I'd like to pull consent item 3A for discussion.
Then let's go ahead and talk about it.
I'm not opposed to buying the front end loader, I'm sure we need it. You know, but a purchase of $120,000 is a significant portion of a $9 million general fund budget. And I was talking with Councilwoman Bills, and you know, it seems like it would be good if in kind of future, maybe this new budget that's coming up, Tyler and Todd, if maybe we could do an inventory of the equipment and things, and maybe, I know you have so many things on your plate, but it'd be nice as a council to kind of get an idea of what things we think are going to need, or what equipment we're going to need to replace, and maybe budget for some of these, because it seems like we're always kind of getting surprises and pulling it out of the reserves. And it would be nice to know just how much we have left in the reserves. I just think it'd be kind of a good budgeting thing, Todd, if we could kind of project. Do you have some comments on that?
Yeah, Councilman Smith, we do, we have a list of all of our equipment, what years they are, you know, how much life we still think that is left in that equipment. Every year, we do try to put equipment in, but when we get down to the end, we're asked to cut, and so those are the first things that come out. And so every time we end up buying equipment, it's emergency because it has completely failed. Because, you know, our budget, we're asked to stay within that budget, and every time we do that and try to add a piece of equipment this size, it takes us over the limit, and we're asked to cut back. So we've tried that scenario, and it just never works, and so we've gotten to the point where snowplows, these loaders, this big equipment-type purchases always ends up being an emergency purchase because it's failed, so.
I think it's a fair ask to say, okay, we don't have budget for this, but we think these are the things that could fail this year.
Right.
So we're at least thinking about it, and then, all right, this could happen this year, I think that's a fair ask.
We could definitely do that. We can, we can share what the list is, our current equipment list, and what the, we have some needs right now, the next couple pieces of equipment that's in our general fund would be a couple more snowplows. We're still using a couple that are 2000s, that are on their last leg, and we anticipate that we'll have to replace those in the near future, so I can definitely provide that list.
Okay, thank you, Todd. Now, just as a matter of perspective, in this case, the front end loader is one we use to load the salt into the salt trucks, right? So that, we have to have that, because we, luckily, we haven't had any big snows, but we do have a loner right now as an interim solution, right? Yes.
We actually did snowplow the last, the one and only snowstorm that we had up in the northwest area. That is when our loader went down during that snowstorm. Wheeler Machinery was courteous enough to loan us a loader in the interim, but they have now taken it back. But we were able to get ours fixed for a short period until we can get a new one, so. It's on its, it's working currently, but it needs to be replaced, so.
How soon can you get the new one?
That's why we, this is more of a ratification, because it takes about two months, so we're anticipating that we will have the new one sometime in January, because we already ordered it, so.
And hopefully, we're going to have some snow here.
Hopefully, we'll have some snow, we're praying for snow, but we're also praying that our loader will make it through the snowstorms, so.
In that order? I just want to know how I should pray.
Yeah, you know what, I really will take the water over anything.
Okay, good.
All right, okay.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the Highland City Council approve the purchase contract for a front end loader as delineated in the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Scott, second by Kim, we're ready to vote.
Okay, I want you all to know, I came in here and tested this today, and your names were all on there. I think that it is out to get me.
But now I get to have fun.
Okay.
Okay, unanimous. Next item, conditional use permit and site approval, automotive lube facility as administrative decision, and Kelly will be running it.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Like the mayor said, Burt Brothers is requesting a site plan and conditional use permit for the expansion of their current business, the Burt Brothers Tire Service, as the expansion is a lube center. A little bit of background, they purchased Lot 5 back in 2018, and they recently purchased Lot 6, like I said, just as an expansion of their current business. As seen in the Town Center Overlay zoning map in the staff report, this is part of the flex use zone in the Town Center Overlay. Flex use is intended to be a mixed-use zone with commercial as well as high-density residential, which is exactly what this is. There's just the general vicinity map. On the east and southern sides is where Highland Vista is, which is not yet updated on the maps. So on the right is the proposed building, and then on the left is their existing structure. This is just a little bit closer, the site plan is, it's about one acre lot. The proposed structure is 4,856 square feet. Hours of operation, they're proposing the same hours as their existing service, which is just Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. They're providing an access on that northwestern side of the lot. It is from Macy's Service Drive, which, to our knowledge, is a private road. Staff recommended that to mitigate or lessen the traffic on that private road. In that little red box you see, we just suggested that they include a drive aisle between Lots 5 and 6, not only to lessen the traffic on the northern road, but to increase the connectivity between their business. This is the overall landscape plan. Everything on our end is according to code, they provided the 15% of landscaping. We also, staff recommended that they increase the amount of trees that they have on those southern and eastern lot lines. They, we basically doubled the amount of those, and that was in order to mitigate the sound going to those residential areas. This is, I forgot to mention, this is a conditional use. It's an automobile service as a conditional use in the flex use zone, and that simply means that it's permitted in the flex use zone. We just, it's just to ensure that we get more details on the project and are better able to manage the impact of the surrounding areas within the zone. And increasing those trees is one of those ways that we were trying to manage that impact on the high residential right next to it. There also is, I forgot to mention, Highland Vista has taken it under their responsibility to build a six-foot-tall solid fence along those southern and eastern lot lines. I checked today, they've, they've built the one along the southern lot line, they haven't yet built the one along the east.
But that'll be a masonry type wall, then?
Concrete.
Okay, okay.
These are the elevations, just general building plans. Everything on our part, we did have to have them change and update a few things to be better in line with our Town Center commercial design standards. They updated the overall elevation, just having differentiation between levels on the top of the building, and they also updated the coloring just to match the earth tone standard that we have in the commercial design standards. They also, we ensured that they had, the only lighting that they have on their lot is mounted on the structure. In their neighborhood meeting, they had someone ask about that, and we, as staff, suggested that they didn't have any lighting provided in their parking lot, again, just to mitigate the impact that it had on those residential areas. And they held their neighborhood meeting on November 5th. Like I said, that one resident attended. We provided the normal planning commission public hearing notices. We held the public hearing at Planning Commission on November 17th. There was run one resident that came up after our report of, of the proposed project, and she said that most of her concerns were resolved, but she did still just have a concern about the noise and the timing, because it does open at 7:00 a.m., and in our development code, the, our quiet hours are between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., which this site plan is in accordance with that, is in compliance with our code. It passed in the Planning Commission for recommendation to the city council, voted 5-0. Because there was that concern of noise, we decided to do a little bit more research on the existing structure and how they decided to, just decided to approve it with these concerns, and they approved it based on the stipulation that their, the air wrenches wouldn't emit any more than 85 decibels. And we, as staff, we just suggest that we, that city council approves it with that same stipulation, just keeping it consistent. Because there is, part of our development code does include that in the, that in all commercial areas, there is a limit of 65 decibels. And just to give you a little perspective, 60, 65 decibels is typically a normal conversation. And with that concern in mind, that's where we found that they did add this stipulation. We, as staff, and along with the Planning Commission, recommend that the city council approve the site plan and conditional use permit subject to the six stipulations that are found in the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions. The developer, as well as the architect are also here, if you have any questions for them specifically.
Council, any questions? Comments?
I have one question. When this is approved, is the owner here, or we just have the architect?
Do you want him to come up?
Okay. I don't recognize everybody with masks.
Yes, mask or hard.
When do you plan to build this structure?
Can you turn on your microphone?
Yeah, Ron, can you push that button, thank you.
It should, it'll go green.
Thank you, my name is Ron Burt, the owner of Burt Brothers. And your staff has been absolutely amazing. Kelly and Nathan, everyone in the office has just been helping us, and to answer that question I'm building up to, helping us get to this process. They work double time to help us get here, because we really want to push it forward. And to getting to this process, we would like to get it built as soon as we can. Like to be open, you know, sometime, you know, before summer hits. Just a kind of a best guess scenario right now, that's why we're pushing so hard to-
So you want it done by June, July-ish?
Yeah, that would be, that would be my preferred.
That's good, do you feel like you have enough traffic access with the roads there that exist?
I think we do. I think what they've asked us to do is just what we would do anyway. I mean, the flow from our one, from our front door there to our other, you know, making that passageway there, I think we have, and we have ample parking, so we're, we're, we're good. It would be a great addition to this, this area. Obviously, we want to keep everybody happy, because we need, we need you all. And we need you all to come and join us and, and help us, help us grow, and we love this community. Highland City is just kind of like how we are, and so we hope that we will always be doing those things that would be what you would want us to do.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Motion?
I'd like to make a motion, if that's okay. I'm excited about this, and anything that adds more amenities for Highland residents, I'm all for, and I know your area, and I know that it is in need, so. I'd move that the city council accept the findings and approve cases CU-20-02 and SP-20-02 request for site plan and conditional use permit approval for an automotive lube facility subject to the six, to the six stipulations that the Planning Commission has spelled out.
So can I just make, I think it was five stipulations from the Planning Commission and one from the staff, is that what I understand?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Five from the Planning Commission and one from the staff.
I'll second it.
Motion by Kim, second by Scott. Ready to vote? And that passes 4-0. Thank you, and we excuse Bron and his architect. We're not going to force them to state the rest of the meeting, so thank you. All right, next item, item 5, this is to be done by Rob. Ordinance 2020-33, amending chapter 12-02 Free Expression Regulation Resolution 2020-33 Designation of Areas for Limited Use of Expressive Activities.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, I'll be up here for the next few items.
And just let me interject real quickly, thank you for wearing your Christmas sweater, it's appreciated.
Thank you for appreciating it. It's December, I thought it might be fun.
And it's not an ugly one, either.
This is true, there are ugly ones.
I own no ugly sweaters, even if other people think so.
Rob, I hate to interrupt you, but I believe that your slides did not get put into this slideshow, and that's my fault, and I apologize. Nathan, I think, is going right now to pick those up and get those working for us, so if you want to proceed without your slides, I really apologize.
Stephanie, I actually have them, Nathan got them to me, so I'm getting them going right now.
Wonderful, thank you, I apologize.
That's fine, it just was a summary of everything that's in the staff report already, so. As you recall, a few months ago, back in September, the city council passed an ordinance regarding impeding or obstructing traffic, dealing with, focused particularly on transactions between cars and pedestrians, but also has a more general purpose of making sure people are not interfering with the normal flow of traffic on certain city streets. As a follow-up to that, there was a discussion of, you know, what do we do if people want to use the streets for expressive activity, marches, parades, protests, along those lines. And so this is that item, we're bringing it back to the city council. Also, state law requires that if we pass an ordinance impeding, regarding the impeding of traffic, that we have a permitting process to handle that. Oh, fantastic. Yep, there we go. So that, we passed the ordinance back in September, and Utah code says we have to create a permitting process for granting person exemption for specified location or time. As a matter of practice, we, the city does this, we have a special event permit that people can apply for and get approval of, but there's no specific process set out in the city code to handle that. So this is mostly closing a loop and making sure it's clear under, that we're, you know, checking off our boxes under state law, that we are providing a process for people to apply for and obtain authorization to use streets, which are not otherwise normal avenues for expressive activities, for such activities on a limited basis. Part of this, there are two separate items being addressed in this item, this agenda item. One is the ordinance that just sets up the permitting process, saying you can come and apply, we'll grant it. The second is, the city council will actually designate the areas that'll be presumptively allowed to use, you know, the certain streets or locations for such activities. And that will be done by resolution, essentially as a policy matter by the council. We have suggested one particular area, the lube, kind of town center all around, city hall and the Public Safety Building and the park as kind of the designated area. And we've also included a few suggested conditions, just to make sure whatever happens is orderly and safe. and safe. And the council's free to amend or add to those or remove them by what you believe is So with that, can I, oh, I can, great. It's current process. So the proposed ordinance adds a subsection to an existing code regarding free speech, just to add that permitting process. It provides that the council will designate the areas and the conditions presumptively allowed for those activities and requires the applicants to comply with whatever conditions you determine are appropriate. That is the text of the ordinance being adopted, was also in the packet. Then the resolution, if you adopt the ordinance, then you'll also need to adopt the resolution designating the area. If you don't adopt the resol, the ordinance, don't adopt the resolution. So, and there are recommendations, plus a few recommended conditions you can add or remove from those as you see appropriate. And I believe that, proposed motion. So I'll leave it on that. Can I answer any questions?
I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah.
When you look at the ordinance and the resolution, in the first sentence, it says, "All due on proper notices of public hearing to public meetings." I mean, we haven't had a public hearing on this. So I was just curious why we always insert that, because if we don't have a public hearing, why is it in the ordinance?
General language that we have, we do provide the appropriate notice that the council will be considering this item, which is part of the posting of the notice for this meeting and having it on the agenda. There is no hearing for this because it's not a development code issue. It's probably just, we have a template ordinance that we're relying on, so we can tweak that in the future, make it clear when and when we are not having a public hearing.
Yeah, I just think if we have a public hearing, it should be in there, but we don't. It shouldn't be. It's just a little technicality.
That's a good catch. We should be clear on that.
Yeah, because it's a couple times. So I guess my question with this, so you've, in your explanation, is because of what we discussed, the first of September, and of course, there's been issues during the summer in various cities. Certainly, there was in Provo and Cottonwood Heights and Salt Lake City. Have we had any instances in Highland where we've had to use something of this order? Not that I'm aware of, having lived here 32 years.
Not to my knowledge either. We've had, we did have one inquiry regarding kind of a residential protest targeted against an elected official who that they were frustrated with, but-
But it wasn't me.
It was not you.
It wasn't you.
Might have been the mayor.
Might have been the mayor.
I think it may.
But it never materialized because everything the individual was trying to do was illegal and it just, it couldn't happen.
So this is a kind of a preemptive thing, just to make sure that we have some sort of process if people want to do this in the future, is it?
Correct.
Exactly. And state law does require the city to have some sort of process. And we do have one that, you know, we've been working with, just, you know, an informal special event permit, but this just sets it down in the code, so no one can say, you know, Highland City doesn't have a way of handling this as required. We're making sure we're doing what we're supposed to, which we have been doing.
So if someone wanted to have like a protest march or something, like what's happened in some of the cities, to do it officially, they would have to apply for a permit? And you'd say you'd have to go around this building? Is that what you're saying?
Yes and no. So there are certain areas that are considered public forums or public fora, parks, sidewalks, those types of areas. There is no permit needed and really no way that we have legally to regulate that kind of activity. People are allowed to use sidewalks, to distribute messages, to picket, you know, whatever they feel like.
So what if they wanted to picket in the town center park, just down below the police station? They could do that without a permit?
Yep, they could do that without a permit. We would, I think, ask them to, you know, just so for coordination purposes, but if someone stood out there, we wouldn't say, "You can't protest here." The purpose of this is to designate areas that are not otherwise open to the public, particularly city streets, where people are not allowed to just walk down city streets for limited times and purposes.
Okay.
So we're just, we're expanding the areas where people are allowed to engage in this respective conduct. We're not limiting it.
So you're saying they could come protest between these two buildings because this is public?
Absolutely.
But they would need a permit if they went out and went around like on the streets?
March on the roads.
A marching on the roads.
If they wanted to march down the roads.
Because they would affect traffic flow and things.
Correct. But if they just wanted to protest, you know, right outside the front, certainly would be entitled to do that.
Okay, that helps me understand this better.
Any other questions or concerns?
So the one that we talked about in September was, can you help me understand the correlation, the relationship? Because the one we talked about in September was more in response to people who were asking for money, right? Like, it was a completely different situation. So can you tell me how these two relate again?
Yes. So the language of the ordinance we adopted in September talks generally about, it is illegal to obstruct or to engage in conduct that can obstruct or impede traffic. And then there's a list of examples of that, which focused on the, you know, the interaction, the panhandling type thing where you step into the street and possibly block traffic that's supposed to be flowing. But it's, as it, you could apply it broader than that, to anyone who's doing anything in the streets that could block people from driving, you know? Walking down the middle of a median or stopping a car from able to drive because you're holding a sign. So this is a process, just to make sure we can say, "If you engage in our process, you're not going to be in violation of that other ordinance that says it's illegal to do that. You won't get cited for impeding traffic." Does that explain it? Great.
Any other questions? Okay, a motion would be in order.
Can I have a quick question? So I guess Chief Williams, do you think, is this, do you think the best geographic location for this, in your opinion? Or is there a better place? Or should we include more places? Or is this the best?
I think this is probably the best that what we can do with. The experience, not our experience, but experience of some of our colleagues, is when people want to protest, they want to be in the most high visible areas, which this is not the most high visible area in Highland. I guess as they would migrate up to the Four Corners area. However, that is a state road and there are probably some different rules that apply there. But if we're going to designate an area, I think this block that's being considered is probably the one that I would probably choose myself. It's close to City Hall where you have the public officials, it's close to the police station where we reside, and it's as good as any, I would think, that Highland has, so.
And for me, the other thing is, you've got areas where people can gather, this park here to the north or the one to the south.
Sure.
That could be a staging area. If you want to go march around and then have a talk or speech, that's a-
Yeah, and this, this, this is easy to coordinate, to be able to shut down roads so people can safely be out in the, in the roadway. So I think this is a great place, or as good as any that Highland can offer. So, just to follow up on that, one of the things we thought about when we were looking at is trying to, we wanted to make sure that they had access to public officials. I mean, that was one of the key concerns, and this is where we are. And two is making sure we try to not disturb as many residents as possible. If you look at a lot of our collectors, 9600 North and others, they have a lot of homes that face those streets. And so that's one of the reasons we narrowed down to this location.
You don't have to pay for this permit, right? Are you allowed to charge for a permit for protesting? I assume no.
You, you could have a small fee for the cost of administrating and reviewing it. I don't know that the city does or not.
We currently do not have on our fee schedule anything for special event permits. It's been something we wanted to address, but we currently don't. They do have to pay if they end up using, needing to use police or fire services. They, the, those agencies have their own fee schedules, but to go through the permitting process with us, there is not one.
And to add on regarding the residential areas, again, this doesn't, nothing in this touches on whether someone can use the sidewalks still for whatever purposes they desire. So that's not impacted.
Okay. There are no other comments or questions? A motion would be in order.
Well, I'll make a motion. And we can make the, the two together, is that correct? For the ordinance and the resolution?
It's fine to make them together, as long as-
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'll make the two motions then together. I move that the City Council adopt the ordinance 2020-33, establishing Section 12.02G. And I also move that the City Council adopt the resolution 2020-33, designating certain areas for limited use for expressive activity and designate the following areas for such activity with the following conditions. A, a loop from Town Center West and Town Center East from Town Center Parkway to 1089, 10890 North. And B, the City Council will need to describe any limitations or conditions, no more than one permit per day, et cetera, up to two hours. So do you want me to make the condition there? Are we going to do that in the future? I'm a little bit-
It'd be good to do that now. If you look above that, there's a possible conditions on use of areas. There's four that we recommend the council use. And you could just-
But in the motion, I've already put the area, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so-
You could just reference those four.
Yeah, we didn't discuss this part. I would just say that I would recommend, as part of this motion, that we do one permit per day, up to two hours each.
Do you ever limit the number of people allowed to attend, or can you not do that? Or is that not a good idea generally, or not necessary?
Theoretically, we could. I mean, part of it would be, we would, there would be at some point, that if we can block off traffic, I guess, there'd be a certain point where if you could have so many people, there'd be some kind of safety concern, and possibly that would be an issue. I don't know what that, you know, number of, of a crowd would be. Otherwise, I think most of the worry would be, you'd have potentially a protest and a counter protest and, you know, trying to use the same areas. So that's why I think having the recommendation for, you know, one per day, and we also have in the ordinance that it's on a first come, first served basis. We don't, whoever gets there first gets it.
I was just, I was just curious. It just seems so, just seems so strange that we have to consider all of this in our little city now, you know? It's just, it's been a weird year.
Yes.
It's all preemptive, though.
Yep.
Scott, I'm fine with those conditions. And if you want to do one per day instead of two, that's fine with me. I just don't foresee having two protests a day here in Highland.
Right.
So, I think the reason I'm-
Yeah, I'm agreeable to that, yeah.
So Scott, as a clarification, so you're suggesting the four conditions that staff recommended in the report?
Yes.
Would you like me to read those?
With the exception of narrowing it to one per day instead of two per day.
Two, yeah, one per day.
Perfect.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion by Scott, second by Brittany.
It's stuck.
Stuck, okay. Now it's, now it's good. That passes unanimously. Okay, Rob, next one?
Awesome.
That's the ordinance 2020-34 Municipal Code, amending prohibiting targeted residential picketing.
Thank you, Mayor. Another free speech related issue. This one came as a suggestion of Chief William. There's been a number of incidents in Utah and nationally of people who want to protest specifically at a, typically a public official's personal residence, in such a way that it's bordering, or if not just straight up harassment, or blocking, you know, driveways, interfering with people at their homes. There's, the, the key one that kind of hit the news was the state epidemiologist was picketed for a while when the mask mandate came out. The governor and lieutenant governor have also been similarly targeted. And there's a risk of something going beyond just expression, free speech, and crossing over into harassment, especially when you have someone who is at their private residence and unable to leave or move their family elsewhere. So this is a, an ordinance that would criminalize a very narrow set of behaviors to prevent that. The example from the state epidemiologist, her private address was leaked online, she was doxxed, and she stated that it was scary and wrong that someone would feel comfortable sharing my personal information. It's taken a very, a really big toll on my family and myself. And they're supposed to be there again tonight regarding the protesters. I think it's really unfortunate, we live in a state where people feel that it is okay to harass civil servants. It is wrong. And there's been similar news stories of, this hasn't, it's not limited to just Utah. This is a kind of nationwide issue.
We also had an incident up in Cedar Hills that potential, that it didn't go sideways, but it had the potential of going sideways, right, Chief?
So Mayor, you're correct. We did have an incident in Cedar Hills. It didn't go the direction that these did, that were, that made the news, but it did bleed over into Highland, where a Highland resident had purchased a home in Cedar Hills. There was a discussion and discrepancy about the legal purchase of the home. The previous residents of the home came and targeted, picketed the people who legally purchased the home here in Highland. And so that was something that we dealt with. It didn't get out of hand, it didn't get ugly, but it, it can and could. And so this, again, this is one of those preemptive things that we're hoping to be able to, to prevent from happening, but to respond appropriately and take some type of action to have those individuals who are civil servants that, or that are in the community that maybe have some, an individual that, that might be in the news, that can keep from being targeted by individuals in their home and they can feel safe at home. So this is, again, this is something that I brought forward, and hopefully we can push forward, so.
And that's, it just gives you a tool to address a circumstance and-
Correct.
Nip it in the bud before it gets-
Correct.
Bad.
So, just as a bit of background, whenever you regulate speech or limit a method of speech, there's a question of whether it's constitutional or not. Just wanted to highlight, the United States Supreme Court has addressed this specific type of ordinance, restriction. And the, the Supreme Court recognized that while normally, you know, you allow people to picket on sidewalks, there can be an exception made where because, well, I'll just quote what they had. "The First Amendment permits the government to prohibit offensive speech as intrusive when the captive audience cannot avoid the objectional speech. The target of the focus picketing banned by the ordinance is just such a captive. The resident is figurative and perhaps figuratively and perhaps literally trapped within the home, and because of the unique and subtle impact of such picketing is left with no ready means of avoiding the unwanted speech." So the United States Supreme Court upheld a similar ban, is what we're proposing here, on the thought that once you're in your house, you can't avoid a message that's being, you know, air horned into your home by someone standing outside with a megaphone. And so you can put certain limited restrictions on how you can do that. A few other communities, I didn't do an exhaustive survey, but I think Salt Lake City, this is, the ordinance we're proposing is based on Salt Lake City's ordinance, but Salt Lake County, Orem, Holiday. I think Orem did theirs in response to the governor being picketed.
Rob, Kurt had a question. Does the 100 feet in front of a person's home include 100 feet in front of the sidewalk? Or where do you measure that from?
It's measured from the property line. So I believe sidewalks, that's all owned by the city, so their property line would end before it.
Okay, so 100 foot from the property line, wherever that ends up being?
Wherever that ends up being.
Wouldn't that place them in front of the neighbors' homes?
Yes, which-
Would it infringe on the neighbors' rights to constitutional right also?
There, there is that issue. The, the thought is, you know, you put them across the street, for example, of the neighbors, or, you know, side to side. It is, it will annoy your neighbors, but it is the least restrictive- It is, it will annoy your neighbors, but it is the least restrictive means of making sure you're not harassing a particular individual. Sure, it's annoying to have people picketing in front of your house, but at least it's not directed at you. It's directed towards your neighbor, so there's a bit of a less, of an immediate impact. With the state epidemiologist, for example, they protested across the street, but the neighbors also counter-protested. They put signs in their windows and, you know, stood out there and talked with people, saying, you know, "We love our neighbor." And so in some ways, it encourages people to communicate, because you can't just yell at one house. You have to go stand at the neighbor's, and the neighbors can say, "Well, why are you doing this?"
So if this is a new targeted protest, it just puts certain restrictions on them to protect the rights of those that are being picketed?
Tim, Kurt can't hear you if you don't talk into your mic.
I can see both sides, to where individuals would believe that their rights are being limited by limiting their means of protest. I've also seen these get out of hand. There were some radical groups that were picketing banks because they thought that there were some racially motivated policies of the bank. So they ended up going to someone's house. And the parents weren't home, and so the kids were inside, hiding under a bed because they were terrified, because the people were actually going onto their property and using megaphones. So it's an interesting balance between the rights of those that are protesting, which are constitutionally protected, and the rights of the residents of the home. It gets to be a safety matter at a certain point, and if you're restricting their movement, then that is tantamount to what? Kidnapping? If you're restricting someone's movement. So it's an interesting, it's an interesting dilemma. I think that these particular steps... I was glad that you showed the Supreme Court decision. It seems like both sides are protected in this particular case, so I think this is probably a good compromise.
And that's exactly right. There's, there has to be a balance when it comes to First Amendment rights. I mean, there's a, you know, bevy of case law regarding being, you know, these kinds of restrictions are subject to strict scrutiny. You have to make sure it's the least restrictive means, and that they're narrowly tailored. So we are balancing the important right of being, you know, being able to be in your house and not be afraid of being in your house against the right for people to use public sidewalks to express messages. So we try to craft it so we're restricting as little as conduct as possible to achieve both interests.
Is included in this an ordinance prohibiting picketers or protesters from blocking city streets? Because lately, we've all seen people blocking freeways, blocking thoroughfares. And so is that prohibited in the city of Highland? I hope so.
Yes. That was the ordinance we passed in September that was impeding or blocking traffic. So, yes. And this is, this is another tool. Someone's blocking the street, the police have tools to manage that. If someone's harassing someone, blocking their driveway, as would never happen here, the police have now, we're giving them an additional tool to manage that, ideally before it gets out of hand and becomes an issue.
So, just, were you through, Tim? I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say, in your legal opinion, then, we're protecting both sides' constitutional rights.
Yes.
And we are kind of walking that tightrope in a good way.
Yes, I do believe we are doing that. A hundred feet is a fairly limited restriction. Except, that's often, you know, a street can be 60 feet wide. That may be across the street, down a little bit, maybe just down to your neighbors a little bit. You could also walk back and forth in front of the house, you know, if you're walking across the entire street in a way. You can still go door-to-door and talk to people. There's, you know, if you want to complain about a city official, you know, you can come to council meetings or planning commission meetings and have your little three-minute that the mayor always allows to come and voice directly to the government. So there's a lot of methods that are still open to people to communicate and express whatever they want to.
And I thought you mentioned also that there are noise restrictions, just in terms of, is there a decibel level? Because someone could get like a turbo megaphone and rattle the windows if they could.
Yes, and the city already has in place nuisance laws regarding noise and noise amplification. So it...
It has regarding noise and what?
Noise amplification devices. If you're, there's a certain level of what's reasonable, you know, cars driving down that emit a certain amount of noise. You standing out there with a megaphone, just yelling for hours, it's not a reasonable, likely amount of noise.
So it's subjective, it's not really...
Most things are, yes. It's hard to have a specific decibel level, because what would be reasonable, say, in front of, recent example, the Burt Brothers' place, is a little bit, you know, there's more commercial activity, it's a bit louder there just as a background level, whereas in some of the residential neighborhoods, it's going to be much quieter. So what is a reasonable amount of noise will differ. But the city code already addresses and has tools to manage that.
Okay, great, thank you.
So the question I'm gonna ask, I'm kind of a little bit hung up on the hundred feet. That seems, where do you come up with that? Is that a standard figure, or, I mean, why isn't it 50 feet? It seems like if it's 100 feet from the property line, it puts you quite a ways down the street. I mean, we have large lots in Highland, but it seems like it throws everybody in front of everybody else's neighbors, and I kind of struggle with that a little bit.
And...
Why wouldn't it be 50 feet or something like that? I mean, you just don't want people on their property, right? You don't want them feeling enclosed in, but it seems like it's putting people quite a ways away.
And that is, I mean, at some level, it is a somewhat arbitrary. I mean, you have to pick a number that works to achieve the interest you're trying to, or the goal you're trying to reach. A hundred feet is what other cities have done and has been upheld. The council could theoretically say, "I don't know that that's necessary to go that far. Maybe we reduce it." I wouldn't recommend going further. At certain level, you're prohibiting too much.
So I mean, if somebody makes a complaint, this is going on to the police right now with the tape measure? I mean, it's a pretty arbitrary thing, isn't it?
Yeah, I think the purpose of the hundred feet is, it's clear if you are in the sidewalk in front of the person's house, right on the property line, you know, where you see a fence where it's in their neighbors', that's clearly within a hundred feet. If you're a ways down, you know, we're not gonna get a tape measure out and say, "Oh, you are so many feet away." It's designed to be a clear number where it's, at a certain point, you know roughly 100 feet is a good distance away. So you can't just be, "Oh, I walked across, you know, the fence line, and that, now I'm good."
Have there been any problems with this in Orem? Because I know they already passed it, so they've had a couple of weeks to kind of live with it. Have there been any problems with it? And also, I'm gonna pass a noise ordinance at my house.
But just for your house?
Totally at my house, and I'm gonna buy a decibel meter, though.
I haven't heard of any issues from Orem. It's, to be honest, it's not an issue that has often arisen. This is, again, more of a preventative measure. With the recent climate and issues that have come up, it has, it's one of those things that we have been made aware of.
Any other questions, comments? Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Well, I'm trying to move on. I have a couple more things I wanted to...
Or not.
I mean, you can just make a motion if you'd like. So just as a summary, and the reason I want to add this and just, when you adopt this kind of ordinance, it's good to be clear what your purpose is behind it. And we've had a good discussion already about the Balancing Act. The prohibition is content neutral, not limiting specific kinds of speech. It's limited to private residences, and that excludes any private residences that are used for public meetings or as their sole place of business. So it is, if you're at your private residence, not just, you know, you live there, but you also operate your business out of there, that would actually exclude you from the protections of this ordinance. So we're really trying to target just the, someone being in their home with their family being harassed immediately outside. As I said, we've already talked about the benefits. So, the text of the ordinance was there. There's a long purpose statement about why this is important, and then the actual prohibition is pretty short. Just, it's unlawful to engage in targeted residential picketing in Highland City as defined therein. So with that, that was all I wanted to say. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sounds great. I'm just, I'm just glad we're looking at this language. We're cleaning it up, and we're basically dotting our i's before it even happens. It's better to be proactive than reactive, and I think these are areas in which we definitely need to be proactive in. So with that, I'd like to move that the city council adopt the ordinance 2020-34 establishing chapter 9.06 targeted residential picketing based on the findings and propose described therein.
I'll second it.
Motion by Kim, second by Tim. I'm ready to vote. Does this need to be a roll call? Because we can just do that real quickly. You're not getting your screen back, are you?
I'm working on it, sorry.
It's probably my fault for the power.
Too many screens now.
Okay.
Well, it looks like... I didn't get to vote. It looks like she passed it with...
I think she's onto the next one.
Done.
That was...
That was the last.
That was the last one. That's this one. Okay. That passes unanimously. All right, I believe you have one more. Ordinance 2020-35, amending chapter 2.36, community trees.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This will be my last item, and then he'll be done with me. This is another proposed code amendment. It stems out of a recent review we did of a, the city's ordinances regarding public trees and the management thereof. As you'll recall, the council was called on to handle an appeal of a staff decision to remove certain trees that were planted in a public park. And as we reviewed that code section, there were some discrepancies and contradictions regarding, you know, which city staff member or entity was responsible for, or had responsibility over those trees. And there was a right to an appeal granted that would essentially grant residents the right to challenge routine staff decisions, which involved, for our latest appeal, a significant amount of resources and time. So we went through and reviewed that and cleaned up several sections, clarified language. Part of the issues, I've highlighted a few examples of the contradictions in the code. One, the city earlier this year passed and created the Parks, Trails and Tree Commission, which replaced a defunct commission, the, I think it was the Community Trees Commission back in the day. The code, as currently written, gives certain powers to that former commission that was kind of updated, we did a, you know, find and replace and stuck in Parks, Trails and Tree Commission. But that conflicts with what the ordinance that actually created, the Parks, Trails and Tree Commission says they're supposed to be doing. So we're clarifying that, putting the responsibility just back on the city forester to manage all of that and to make decisions, while the commission is responsible for recommending policies, rules, and other recommendations to the city council and to staff for their review. Also removing from that commission the authority to remove trees and to make that decision on their own. Again, the commission, as created by the city's ordinances, does not have any decision-making authority, so we're clarifying that. The final matter was regarding appeals and how violations or issues are handled. Current code divided it amongst the zoning administrator, the city forester, and the Parks, Trails and Tree Commission, with an appeal of, with a right granted to appeal certain decisions to the city council. Our recommendation is, as these are staff decisions, that we remove the right to bring it to the council and instead reserve it to staff to handle. Subject, of course, if there is a nuisance abatement process that follows its normal procedures, if there's a criminal action that still follows normal appeal procedures. So... Did I break it again? Great. So a lot of it was, there's a lot of clarifying language, just cleaning up the ordinance. Designating the city forester as basically the person responsible for issuing any permits regarding trees, making the Parks, Trails and Tree Commission clear that it is an advisory committee, and removes the ability of residents to appeal staff actions regarding public trees to the city council. Permit appeals will now go to the city administrator, and nuisance or criminal actions will still be handled as they are normally handled.
And then it just clarifies that any tree in a public land, not just parks or trees, will...
That's another good point. There was odd language in the code that says, you know, "Public trees are those that are in a right-of-way," but that's, doesn't include all the places a tree could exist, so we expanded the definition to be clearer. So I went through, and I'll know for next time to use better coloration so you can see easier what I'm pointing at. This is where we remove language pointing to the Parks, Trails and Tree Commission, and just designate the city forester for all of that.
And is the city forester Josh?
Yes.
And why do we, do we need to have him have the title of city? That's just as confusing to me, because I didn't even know we had a city forester until...
It's just useful so we can say as a organizational point, here's the person who's responsible for it. You know, much, often we point to, for a lot of development code things, the zoning or planning administrator, which is Kelly. Or there'll be other points to the city administrator, or they're designated. It's just a way of, so residents know, who do I talk to about this? You know, if they call up and say, "Who's the city forester? I have an issue with my tree," we can say, "Oh, that's Josh."
Okay.
Cleaning up Parks, Trails and Tree Commission, just saying they make recommendations. Removed everything about the commission, removed deciding on their own to remove city trees.
But they can still recommend.
They absolutely can still recommend. It was, before, it was written as, basically, they hold a vote and decide whether to condemn certain trees, which is just not how it's operating and how it shouldn't operate as the commission is currently formed. And this regards the city council and the appeal rights, where we just clarify Parks, Trails and Tree Commission. They submit recommendations to the city council for you to review and make policy decisions on. And then appeals of rulings or orders for permits go to the city administrator. And the city administrator can make a final decision on that. Let's see. And then just cleaning up language of how we enforce things, just doesn't alter normal appeal rights for criminal citations or nuisance abatement. So happy to answer any questions on this.
My good question is this, I appreciate all the work you've done on this, and I think it clarifies things. And I would like to understand the reasoning behind why you would eliminate any appeals to the city council. Because we have the PTTC committee making recommendations to us, and we'll kind of prove basic, I think, landscaping things or whatever they recommend. But if a person has a problem, they can only deal with the city administrator. And I don't have a big problem with that, but I, we are the elected officials in the city. It would seem like a citizen that had a real problem with something should be able to come and appeal before the city council. Why have you eliminated that option?
Yeah, and that is a great question. My thinking and our thinking was, this doesn't prohibit, of course, anyone from coming and talking to the city council. You are the elected officials, and you can adopt policies that govern. However, the basic administration of the city is separated where you create the high-level policies, you create the ordinances, and then it's designated to the mayor or the city administrator to enforce those and carry those out. The issue is, as it was written, you could have some, you know, Josh goes out, says, "Oh, that tree is half-dead, I need to remove it." A resident could appeal that, and when it goes to an appeal, it is a hearing. You know, I have to do a staff report, we involve attorney time, it has to be recorded, you have to have a special meeting for it. You know, I have to do a staff report. We involve attorney time. It has to be recorded. You have to have a special meeting for it. And it did not seem, for the type of decisions that were being appealed under the, the tree issue, it didn't seem to be the type of thing that really warrants going to a full council. Rather than, you know, someone who's complaining about, I don't think it's being maintained well, or I would like more trees. They can go talk to the commission. They can go certainly talk to any of you, and you can make those recommendations or direct staff to take certain actions. But when you have an individual decision, say someone goes and plants a tree on a trail and encroaches, as happens in Highland, and staff goes through and says, you know what, we can't have that. It's ruining the trail. I want to go remove it. But before staff can do that, we have to issue a notice. They can appeal it. It can take three or four months at, you know, several thousands of dollars to handle that kind of routine decision.
Well, that's going through the appeal authority, but, I mean, why can't you set up a, a, a process? I mean, you go to the city administrator, but if people have a problem, why can't they bring it to, to the council? I, I just, you know, as elected official, I just don't know why, I mean, they can talk to us individually, but this basically seems to me like it takes away any influence we really have. I mean, we can go talk to the city administrator and say, hey, we disagree with this, but short of bringing a motion before the council. I, I just have a little trouble with eliminating totally an appeal to the council.
It's not unlike how most staff decisions are handled. I mean, you don't have an appeal right for how public works goes out and repairs a water line. There's no question about, you know, we've dug up a sidewalk. They might complain to you, but they can't ask for a formal appeal before the city council. So in that way, we're treating it the same way as we're treating all other staff actions and decisions.
So in this case, trees were an outlier, an exception to the general rule?
Correct. Now, of course, this is, you could pick and choose which parts of the amendment you would like to adopt or not adopt. I think a lot of the, the code amendments and clarifications are certainly warranted regardless of the appeal issue. But it seems for routine staff decisions, it, it is odd to grant someone a right to have a hearing before the city council, not just, you know, come and talk to them or raise the issue, but you have to sit down, you have to then make a motion and vote on a decision. As we, for the, the previous appeal, I think it took, I mean, obviously it spanned several years, but from final decision, we had letter goes, gets sent out. There's like a month or two of compliance time. It's not done. Additional notices are sent out. There was a discussion held with the city forester. There was an informal hearing with Nathan and me and the residents. Nathan, we then had to drop a, written a decision for Nathan to issue. And then it came again to the city council, who then reviewed it and issued a similar decision. And that took three or four months, I think, to handle all of that. And that, the, the right to do that is what we're removing. Now, that is the recommendation of staff, of course, but it's up to you to decide how you want to handle this code.
My comment would be, yes, it's, it's, it's removing something, but it's removing an exception to almost every other type of decision that we make in, in a similar fashion. So we're, trees were the specific exception. And it just, it didn't make sense to have that as an exception when there's so many other cities' staff decisions that could be appealed equally. So if we uphold the appeal right for this, then to be consistent, we would need to go through and say, what other things would residents have a concern about that staff does and, and grant an appeal right for every one of those? So this seemed like a reasonable decision in my mind to, to go that route.
It doesn't seem like it takes away the rights of residents if they don't agree with staff's decisions, you know, email us and say, hey, this is what's going on. I mean, I, I feel like we get emails all the time of residents who have issues with something that's happened or with a staff decision. But it just takes away that lengthy, lengthy process for staff to be able to basically do their job.
I do worry though, I mean, I agree with that, that if you remove any appeal process, a formal process or something, that it can generate a lot of kind of anger in citizens. I'm sure we'll hear from them with emails and stuff, but it, it seems to just say, hey, we've got this development, or this is in our code. If you don't like it, you can lump it. And, you know, the city administrator says this is the way it's going to be. I, I, I just, I just kind of struggle with that. I just think there should be a way that people can feel like they can approach the city council who are the elected officials if they have a disagreement with this. You know, I support 90% of this. I just am a little unsure why we're eliminating, you know, the appeal to the city council. Not that I like those appeals. I missed most of the last one, but you know, I, I don't know. I just kind of struggle with that.
And I also point out, this is limited to public trees, so this is trees planted in park strips, medians, rights-of-way, trails and parks. It doesn't, nothing touches on people planting trees on their own yard. This isn't governed that type of activity.
So these are theoretically trees that we're responsible for maintaining?
It's basically, they're appealing something that's already in our code and ordinance. They're appealing, basically them breaking the law. And, and why do we have to go through this big, long process to be able to say, no, you are wrong, and this is where it is? I, I mean, I, I don't know. For me, just taking away that length of time that was spent to, to exercise our right as a city to enforce our codes and ordinances just doesn't make sense. But I love the fact that residents still can always reach out to us and say, hey, I don't agree. And then as city council, we can empathize with them. Or we can explain to them and we can communicate with them, but looking on the other side of it, those residents who are trying to enforce what we've already agreed upon and have to wait, I mean, how many years to get these trees removed, in which we're still waiting to get these trees removed? It's not fair on their part as well.
Well, and I understand that, basically agree with it, but, you know, I'm looking at kind of the broader picture because we've kind of struggled with open space issues, which kind of is a corollary to a lot of this for years now, and have yet to come to a real good resolution. So I, I don't know. I'm, I'm still kind of struggling with this. I, I can support 90% of this. I just think that people should have the right to appeal if they want. I, I don't know. Because we're constantly kind of struggling with these same issues as a council, and we're not the first council. So I don't know who's right or wrong. I mean, right now, we have the development code and yes, everybody should follow it, but we know there's hundreds of examples in the city where people are not following things. And as we enforce all of that, you know, it's going to be a challenge, so.
I think it really comes down to maybe, we need to relook at that development code. Because if it's not working, then we need to figure that out.
Yeah, and that's been the ongoing discussion.
And I agree with you on that.
I'll also just raise the point, this council still remains free absolutely to create policies, you know, for how to manage open space or how to manage trees, or, you know, as we do with schedules for road improvements where, you know, what, what is the council's priority here? You could do a similar thing for, this is how we'd like encroachments handled. And, you know, give more specific guidance. Even if you remove the, the direct appeal, you can still give fairly specific guidance on areas as, as you do with any other public works matter.
I agree. I like the idea of handling those things by, by changing the code more. How many times have we had issues with this over the past, I don't know, how many times has this been a problem? I know we had the one recently, but have there been other problems besides that?
This is the only one that I've dealt with.
And didn't we just raise the price also of those appeals, so that will be something that people will not do as often?
Appeal authority, yeah.
This is not technically covered by that fee cost.
Doesn't go to the appeal authority.
No, wouldn't, we'd have to, you're right. This way, we'd have to set a separate.
This is not going to the appeal authority. This is coming to the council. There was no cost for it. And honestly, it's, I was, I was looking through the code to make sure we were handling this properly, and I saw that section. And I don't know that it has been used before, so I don't know whether that cuts, which way that cuts. Either it's not an issue or it is an issue, but we're aware of it and residents may be more aware of it now as well.
My other, my last comment, and this is just minor, but there are a bunch of, like, this was really hard for me to read because in a whole bunch of the, like, the blue parts that are crossed out are added, like, on Section 2.36.080. Number four, like, the S is crossed out on the first of that line. And then right below on 2.36.090, that, the T is added there on the there. So it's like in almost every sentence, there are like a typo in the, where the first letter of each word is crossed off, and I just, it made it a little bit harder to read, so I just wanted to make whoever is typing those up aware of that, so that when they go to write the actual code that's corrected, just the whole way down.
Thank you.
Do you see where I'm talking about?
Yeah, I'm looking at it as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Got oddly put in there. We'll make sure to, I wrote it up, so it's on me.
Yeah. It happens. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion. I move that the city council adopt the ordinance amending certain provisions of Title II, Chapter 36, Community Trees.
I'll second.
Motion by Kim, second by Brittany. Any further discussion?
Mayor, there's one comment from Chief Thompson, just minor to change the F2D from height for landscaping 13.6 instead of just 13 feet.
Say that again?
13.6.
F dot two dot D.
Chief, do you want to, you can speak if you'd like.
Is there a change to the hanging limb issue?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, that's just the height for rock, and so that's basically at 13 feet, we'd be the recommendation. Section F, have a, a, a lower case D.
Chief, you're breaking up pretty badly. Can you try saying that one more time?
Can you hear me okay?
You're good at the moment, yep.
So in Section F dot two dot lowercase d, it addresses 13 feet, the clearance height. And it needs to go to 13 feet, which is, that's the height of our ladder curve.
Oh, I see. So in the, this is not an amendment that I had proposed. It's just the general standards for how to maintain trees. It currently has a standard for 13 feet clearance. The chief is asking us to increase that from 13 to 13 and a half feet, 13 feet six inches. So you could add that as a, is that right?
And Nathan, correct me if I'm wrong. I can't remember the exact location, but we also have a code, and I think this takes care of chief's concern. For snow plowing, we actually require 14 feet straight up from the curb so that we can get snow plows in, and that's somewhere in our code, and I don't remember the section, but.
So should we have dropped 14 feet then, here?
Well, I just, I think we're already covering it for like emergency vehicles and snow plows. I think this is specifically talking about just proper trimming with the, with the street itself, so.
You might as well make it the same though.
Well, but it's, it's, that's actually saying, go to D again, because I think it.
Tell me the number, I'm sorry.
It's two. It's in Section F. Go to F.
F dot two dot D.
Down, keep going down. Keep going, keep going, keep going. Going, it's near the bottom, right there. So key, next one down, D. And let's read that, because hanging limbs, branch growth shall be maintained 13 above street and eight feet above sidewalk. So, yeah, we, we have a something that's a little bit more detailed in the code about snow plows that says, straight up from the curb and gutter, it's got to be measured at 14 feet. And I think that would take care of chief's concern, but we can add it here.
We would, inconsistencies are bad. You could either point to where the other one is.
Yeah, we might as well just leave that 14, so it's consistent with the other location.
Any, any other discussion on that?
So you just would, if you'd like to incorporate that, amend your motion to.
And amend, okay. Make them, that motion with the amendment in two, wait, in F two.
D.
D. That it be amended from hanging limit branch growth shall be maintained 14 feet instead of 13 feet above streets and eight feet above sidewalks.
I will second that again.
And Brittany seconds the amended motion. Any other discussion?
So let me just ask a question. So are we basically saying that if someone wants to plant a tree along a trell, and it's a little bit on city property, and I think about Catty Lane, which has been beautifully done in many instances, that we're going to, if there's a complaint about that, we'll make them remove their trees, and the city administrator says, this is the way it is, and that's it? Is that what we're seeing?
It's the same rules as before, so we would ask that if someone's going to plant something that's on city property, you come get a permit from the city. So, you know, the forester can say, you know, that's, that's a type of tree with the right root structure and height and distance that won't impact anything and will be fine. This doesn't change who makes that decision or denies or grants that. It just changed whether, if that gets denied, whether they can then appeal that to the city council.
Scott, do you think though, I mean, isn't this back to your point that it's better to address those kinds of things in our, in our code initially, like where it would be okay to plant a tree and where it wouldn't be okay to plant a tree, instead of having to make a lot of exceptions all over the place that are then hard to enforce and hard, hard for staff to decide what to do. I mean, to me, I feel like we should have have code that's consistent and, and so that it's easier for staff to just enforce straight across, so you don't have a lot of decisions that need to be appealed. And it seems to me if we're having a lot of people needing to appeal a decision or wanting to plant trees that are not in the code, then it's a problem maybe with our code.
Well, but there is a problem with our code, and, and we know that it goes on all through the city. So I guess what I'm saying is when, when we're kind of eliminating the appeal process and all this stuff, the council, does this just grant the right to the staff and the forester that to walk along all the trells and all the things and say, gee, your tree encroaches, you know, three feet on the city trell, it needs to go.
How can we fix the code?
Yeah.
Like, is there something we can do to fix the code to avoid those problems rather than putting it on the, the forester, which we're, I'm going to use that word a lot now? Is there something we can do in our code to remedy the situation instead of making it something subjective that the forester and the city administrator have to decide? That seems like a more consistent way to do it anyway.
No, and I, I agree 100%. It's just that we've never really done that, that I'm aware of. And we just have a million exceptions through the city, and it's not a problem unless somebody complains about it. And then this, and staff addresses it. And, you know, I, I just, it's somewhere we need to kind of maybe come with some ideas or conclusions, because it works in some places and it doesn't in others. I mean, obviously people complained about this situation that we've talked about, this bringing all this forth. But, you know, is that the way we work? Is, like, we let people do what they want to do? But if, even though it's against code, but if there's a complaint, then we enforce it. I, I just wish there was a way we could kind of come up with some sort of resolution, because we've talked. because we've talked about some of these issues for the whole 10 years I've been involved with the city. I just.
Do you think it's possible to write a code that, that addresses all the situations? Or do you think that's not possible until we have to have all these exceptions? Like, if it's possible, do you think it's possible to write?
I, I would think there'd be some way to come up with something where we could say, there is a permitted process for planting on some of these areas if it's, you know, beautification and it's approved. But, you know, I, we're going to have to change the code, because if you want to get, if I went and went and complained about a bunch of places, I mean, we'd keep the staff really busy because they'd just say, hey, cut them down. And, and we've got so many people that encroach on the conservation areas and stuff. I mean, we've never really addressed it. We talk about it, but we never do anything about it. And I, I just, I'm just kind of struggling a little bit with it.
Yeah, I get, I get that, but I, I mean.
Let me, can I add a quick comment? There is an entire appendix in the city's code that goes through and is quite lengthy. It's what you just amended with that F, that has planting guides, tree species that are permitted and not permitted, locations, diagrams, a whole permit process. The issue is not that the code isn't clear enough, it's that, frankly, the issue is enforcement. With every kind of encroachment, it's how much staff time do you want to dedicate to people going out looking for these things? People aren't coming in for permits. We have a process. We could say, look at this. If you submit a permit, we'll review it. And, you know, if it looks great, if it matches the area, if it beautifies it, it doesn't impact a trail or a sidewalk, we can approve it. It's a limitation of, we don't have the staff to handle it, I don't think.
Right. It's a, it's a problem. You got building code ones, you've got fences, you know, basically any standard that we have, people can violate it. And sometimes it's not an ignorance, right? They just don't know. And sometimes they know and they just, they do it anyway, which is, I think that's less than just ignorance personally. I think ignorance is a lot, and that's not a pejorative word, it's just you don't know. And I, it's, it's a, I don't know how you fix that. It's a tough one.
Yeah, it is a tough one.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion before we vote? Okay, Aaron. Okay, that passes four to one. Thank you. Next item, Todd. Construction contact reconstruction of culinary well, house number three. And this is kind of a good news one.
This is kind of a what?
Good news, right? The bill is less than the was, we budgeted.
Yeah. So mayor, council, so if you remember last year, we did a construction project on well number two near the mouth of the canyon. That is now complete. It went very well. We completely rebuilt the wellhouse and added a room for chlorination for future. That was in the master plan and. Well, number three is, this well is located at 6,400 West and 10,400 North, right there on the southwest corner. I have the location there. It's also in your documents. This is between well number two and well number three, there are most used culinary wells. This wellhouse is in our master plan to be done this year. We've worked with B and T Engineering to redesign this wellhouse, put it out to bid. This is, this is the existing wellhouse as is right now. The fence is kind of in disrepair in a couple of locations on the backside next to the trail. There's a couple of places where it's, it's not necessarily failing, but easy to get into. The gates aren't really up, not up kept. All of this was built in the 1970s, so it's fairly old. This, so this is kind of a diagram of the new wellhouse. As you can see, we're also planning for that, that, in the top right corner, that would be the room for the chlorination for future. Once we get three of these wells equipped, then we, we'll be up and ready to chlorinate the whole system as a whole at that point. But basically, the bids came in well under what we had projected. Vancon, Vancon Construction did our well number two. We pre-qualified 10 contractors, only, all 10 of them came to our pre-bid meeting, but only six of them bid the project. For scheduling reasons or whatever issues came up, I don't know. But six of them came and, and provided bids, and Vancon was the low bid. Since they did the last one and did a great job, we as staff recommend that we approve them for the project. Any questions?
So how much lower was it than the budget?
In your, if you look in the very last page in the, in the packet of what I provided, I think it was 400, in the 460 range.
Yes.
And this bid is 340 range, so.
So it's 120 less, roughly.
So that's what we originally, in the, in the culinary master plan several years ago when we did it, we estimated that that's roughly what it would cost. And so we're, this bid includes fully refencing the site and everything, and so we feel like it's a really good bid. And in fact, Vancon was, came to us and asked us if we would just give them a change order from the last one and let's get going. But they were, they were pretty aggressive and, and gave us a good price, so.
Awesome. So this would start in the spring?
This will actually start as soon as we get contracts underway. So they'll probably actually mobilize and start removing the building this January.
Okay.
So, any other questions?
I just wanted to thank you for putting all the schematics in. It was fascinating.
You know, I.
I like to tease you on that.
I, I know you do, and if I don't put it in, sometimes I get blamed for that. So I, I err on giving you all of the information, so.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I'd like to make a motion if there's no discussion.
Awesome.
I move that the city council approve and authorize the city administrator to sign a contract with Vancon Incorporated to proceed with the reconstruction of the culinary well, house number three, for $339,335 and no sense.
So you're second?
I'll second.
A motion by Scott, second by Kim. Ready to vote? Okay, that passes unanimously.
For the record, Kurt made a comment online, Todd. He said, great job on getting those good bids, so.
All right. Next item is proposed approval of the 2021 utility rate study update. Nathan, is that you?
That's for, for me here tonight, mayor.
Oh, oh, well, great, Tyler.
Thank you. Mayor Council, great to be with you. Here for your consideration is an item here not of tremendous financial volume, but has some impacts down the road that we wanted to basically begin the conversation, so. I'm going to grab the pointer just a moment. Sorry about that. So as a general rule, to make sure that our utility rates are appropriate, like to update those every five years. And the last study was performed by Zions Public Finance here. Began in 2015, completed in 2016 at a cost of $40,000. So here in anticipation of updating the study, received bids from two firms. Zions, who again, performed the last study at $24,000. And then Louis Young Robertson and Burningham came in at 17, just over $17,000.
So this would be using the existing model, just updating the.
That's correct.
Data and, and then double checking things.
Correct. So that, that scope of work would include that update like the mayor mentioned. We'll take a look at demand projections and modeling, see if there's any updates that need to occur there. What's the revenue requirement to cover costs? Replacement, any infrastructure significant upcoming there that needs to, we need to take a look at? Debt service, and then of course, participation in the process to review and discuss and approve the, the rates there that need to be updated. So as we took a look at those proposals, a few considerations. Of course, Zions has direct experience with this, with this set of data, and that would certainly be an advantage for them. Louis Young had a more competitive price. Do have a local project manager here within an hour, as opposed to the project manager being in Idaho for Zions. Some additional staff assistance. But we also identified the, a new perspective here where Zions performed the previous study. Here, if we have another firm performing the update, we'll have a diverse perspective there, so. For those considerations, we recommend awarding the contract to Louis Young. And happy to answer any questions that you would have.
So I have one comment. So what we just talked about, the wellhouse cost was $120,000 less than we anticipated. A utility rate update would look at things that we have spent already that were more or less than projected, in this case, less, and factor that into a new recommended rate structure for culinary, PI, storm sewer and sewer, right?
Correct.
So it's possible that a recommendation could come up that's either up or down.
Right, absolutely. We want that to be appropriate, sufficient, but not excessive by any means.
So Todd may have just saved our rate payers a little bit of money. Either, it's a positive for you, Todd.
It's a positive.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Because of the mask, and I didn't speak right into it, so that's my bad. Anyway, good work, Todd, and appreciate the fact that we need to update this, and I think it's a good thing. Any other comments?
I'd like to make a motion if that's okay.
That's great.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
I know this was added into the agenda late. Did it get on the public website too?
It did. It was updated.
Stephanie says yes.
Yes, we did an amended agenda. It was updated as on our city's website as well as on the public notice website.
Right, motion.
I move that the city council approve the proposal from Louis Young Robertson and Burningham Incorporated for the preparation of the 2021 utility rate study for the amount of $17,150.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Kim, second by Brittany. Ready to vote?
It's not working.
Okay. Passes unanimously. Next item is mayor, council, and staff communication items. We're going to start off with Todd.
Right. Little history, what's been going on. A lot of you are well aware that our Canal Boulevard project is well underway, and we have completely taken down the Jensen home and the walking horse home, which housed our parks equipment during the winter months. Well, and, and all year long for that matter. With that equipment being removed out of there, we didn't have anywhere to put it for the interim. And so we actually used, what you see there on the, on the screen, this is the property over on Harvey Boulevard, right off North County Boulevard. It's the property that we, with county funds, we purchased this property to build the road. You can kind of see the intersection there on the west side is all ready to go to tie in North County Boulevard, or excuse me, Canal Boulevard. But on the east side, we're actually widening Harvey Boulevard and putting a signal at this location. Well, with the project, we tore down the home and the, the building on the south side, but the two north buildings remain. And I reached out to the county and asked if we could house our equipment for the interim there, and they were generous enough to let us do that. Until they figured out what they were doing with the property. Well, now, and so that, that building that I've circled there on the northeast side, this is kind of what it looks like from a street view. Our equipment is in it right now as we currently speak. They have entered negotiations with American Fork. Now, the negotiations have not finalized, but American Fork is looking to buy this property and, and build a fire station. I was able to walk out there with American Fork and show them the site and show them the buildings. The building is in pretty good shape, inside, not outside. But the internal frame structure of the building is, is still, and it's in good shape. And I approached Utah County and asked if we could take that building. Because we, we don't have anywhere to put our parks equipment. So Nathan worked on getting some storage units, and we've got some storage units lined out that we can move the equipment. We haven't started moving it yet because we've been tearing down bathrooms. But we will start moving the equipment out of there so that they can finalize their negotiations. But I have asked that we take that building. Now, what, what I proposed, and this won't move. Maybe I've gone too far. Okay. And, and I apologize, that, that image doesn't show up very well, but this is the corner, this is our old city hall, the community center. We have a lot of unused property on the backside of that property. We, we looked at building a parks maintenance building here years ago, probably five years ago. We did some, some renderings, and we had a lot of pushback from one specific resident. But the mayor and I were able to go meet with him last week, it was last week.
Jess Adamson.
Yeah, Jess Adamson. And he was, he was supportive of this, if, if we did certain things, and, and felt like it would be a good use of the property. Now, this isn't a final layout. This is just to bring it to council. This is a communication item. But just really explaining, you know, the, the purpose of this is just to say, we're, we're up against a wall here. We, we can't have, come spring, we can't have equipment in storage units that we're going to every day. The storage unit that we have is down in American Fork. It's the only storage units that we could find that had the space that we needed. We can't obviously work out of that. That would mean that we're going down and hauling equipment and driving mowers up from South American Fork every day trying to maintain parks. We would like to relocate the building that is on the county property to this location. Now, there is obviously some, a lot of funds. We, we would need to completely reconstruct the footing and foundation, a lot of flat work, a lot of site improvements. But this is our idea of the best use of the building for the, the least amount of money. Bottom line is, we as staff have realized we don't have $1.3 million to build a new building. We just don't. And so this is our solution as staff, that with the money that we have, we're hoping that the $300,000 that we have set aside will be enough to complete the improvements, completely put up the walls that we would need to, to enclose this, and, and have a location for our guys to, to work from for years to come.
So would this be a, a permanent solution, or is this a solution until we do have the $1.3 million to build a parks maintenance building?
I look at this as a permanent solution, because, you know, we, we, we struggle with our, our budget as is. Unless we make a drastic change in revenue, we won't get the 1.3. And so I see this as something that we can do now and, and, and work out of for several years to come.
And the county will basically give us this building, or is there a price on it?
We are still working through what that's going to, you know, when American Fork found out that I was interested in this, and, and trying to look to salvage, because they met me on site with a contractor to completely demolish both buildings. That's what the plan was. That's what the plan was. And I felt like it was, it was a building that was in good enough shape that it was worth salvaging and, and doing something with, and trying to save whoever, whether it be Highland City or American Fork, money. But this is a, a huge need for Highland right now, and I've expressed that to Utah County, and they're, they're supportive at this point. How this works out, I don't know, but...
So where would the access be to access this parks maintenance building? Would it be through that parking lot or the other side?
Yeah, we can't get another access on Alpine Boulevard. What we would do, Alpine Highway, excuse me. What we would do is use the existing access and actually put another secondary access even further right up against the west property line. So there would be a loop. It would, it would greatly increase, and, and to be honest with you, I've kind of changed our thoughts when the mayor and I met out there and looked at the site. I've, I'm almost leaning towards moving the building even further east and expanding the parking even more for the city hall, for the community center. So that we have a lot of joint parking that for events, we won't have any parking out on North, 10-400 North. We'll have all internal parking so that it's, it's more safe.
Yeah, because I know we lack parking when there are events there.
Right. And, and most of the events, if you look at the schedule, the bigger events are in the evenings, and we won't have any of our guys there at that point. And so we feel like it would be a great use to have both, both uses, and, and we can, we can fully utilize the community center as well, so...
I just have to say, I really like the way you think outside the box.
So putting the second entrance on the west side of that property fixes a current problem, because we should be doing that now. It's a real...
Right.
All of us that have been there know that that's a real pain in the rear to get in and out of.
Well, yeah, and I'd just like to, I mean, we had a discussion, I think, that went on in the council for five years to find a location for this building, and this was one of the alternatives, but the council voted to put it in the western side of Mountain Ridge Park, and the neighborhood there appealed that, but then lost the appeal. I, I guess some of the arguments were, is what the mayor's bringing up, is getting in and out of that area. And so I, one question I have is, why aren't you putting this building on Mountain Ridge where the council approved to put it in the first place?
Because, number one...
It's going to be ugly.
No, well, number one, we, we, if you remember and go back to that approval...
Yeah.
We committed to do a lot of things with the building over there, and that's why it ended up being $1.3 million. The facade and all of those things that we agreed to. This is more secluded and, and out of sight.
But it's not going to be a problem with the neighbors, because it's not going to be that nicer looking building.
It, it will. If you actually drive down Alpine Highway, there are two other buildings on that. In, in fact, right there, I should have got a picture of it, but Jess Adamson has a very similar building in his backyard. It's going to look like that. We will reface it. And then there's another building, and I forgot the name of the gentleman.
The artist, he's in your word.
He, up on the corner, the corner going down into your development.
Oh, Jay Randy, yeah.
Yeah, so...
He has a building...
He has a building that, that will...
Yeah, he does.
That will look very similar to this. And so we, the other concern, Scott, is this site already has all of the improvements. It has utilities, it has the parking already started. There are so many site improvements, just the site improvements alone over the other one, we're in the four to 500,000 range. By the time we got all of the parking, utilities, curb and gutter and, and road improvements, this is already there. We, we don't have to spend that money. The hope is, is to, to utilize the, the community center for a shared space for restrooms and that type of thing.
But then you don't have to put restrooms in this building, which is another cost-saving room.
Right. We, we don't, we don't anticipate that this would have restrooms in it. This is just a...
You do use the community center restrooms?
Correct.
So, and I think it's an agreeable compromise and things, but I, I guess that means that that part of Mountain Ridge Park will be developed as park. Is that what you're saying?
Correct. I, that would be our first option. It's just we're realizing as staff that if, if we wait for that to happen, we have nothing to do with our equipment by spring. We've got to do something by spring, and we feel like this is the best alternative with the money that we have to get something done.
And Jess was really figuratively disposed to this. He, he thought it was a real...
Because he was pretty opposed to it before.
Yes, he was. But this time he was very supportive.
You know, we, yeah, we walked the site, we showed him what the building looked like, we showed him, you know, that we would be fencing off the east side and, and doing improvements on that, because there's a portion of the, the highway that we don't have landscaping right, right in there, that, you know, we'll do some site improvements and make it look nice. And, and if, if we can get the building and do it the way we think we can, we think we can do all this for $300,000, and that's what we have in the budget.
And it's big enough.
Yeah.
And you're going to raise it because you're going to put a concrete foundation that you'll put the...
Yeah, so if you go back, if we go back, so this sits right on the ground. We have a very hard time getting a forklift in there and moving things, and so what we would do is we would actually lift this building up about four feet onto a foundation wall, and that would give us the room that we need inside the building. But the building would look very similar to that, just raised. And in fact, Mr. Roundy, his, his building is the same. It's got a foundation wall and it's raised up. So if you want to get an idea of what this would look like, it would look very similar to that.
And, but we would have new paneling, whatever.
Yeah, we're, yeah. We will completely replace everything that you see there on the roof and the siding, you know, and new doors. Obviously, that one on the south side is in really bad shape down, yeah, that one's pieced together. So we'll, we'll make sure that we have new doors that are painted and that's, that's, that is our hope. If, if we don't do this, I don't know what we're going to do. We're going to be working out of storage units, so...
No, I think it's fine. I think we just need to make the building as attractive as possible under our budget because it is in a residential area.
Right.
And, I mean, we had a lot of opposition, made a lot of amenities on the other building because of residential area. So I just think it's only fair to the people that live in that area, not only Jess Adamson, but the people whose homes are next to it and behind. I just, I think we should take that into account.
Agreed. Any other questions?
Todd, Kurt has some.
Okay.
Is there going to be fencing put up around the building and the parking?
Yes. So the, the plan would be, if, if, if this all goes to plan, we, we would actually shift the building to the east and completely fence it off, so it would be separate, but the, the parking lot would be completely extended to the north, if that makes sense. So this was, this was just the plan we took out to meet with Jess and get some ideas, but after talking to him and getting his opinions on some things, we decided that it would be best to move that building to the east and extend all of the parking, so the community center has the entire parking lot going to the north. Then we would have a wall on the east side up against the highway, very similar to all of the other walls that we put up with developments, so it would be a concrete panel wall. And then we would, we would fence off the building at night so that people obviously didn't have access to...
And that would just be your chain link fence?
Yeah, just a black chain link fence to, to give us some security. And that's, that's the plan would be, that north piece right behind the city hall would be completely fenced in.
So have you talked to the neighbor on the north there?
We have not yet. We, at this point, I, I want to finalize the negotiations with Utah County and make sure we have a building.
First?
Mm-hmm.
But if you're moving this east, you're putting it right south of his home, right?
Well, that, no, that's a big outbuilding. So if you look, yeah, right there is a very large outbuilding, and there's actually a smaller outbuilding right next to it, to the west. It would be completely blocked by his buildings.
So his house is to the north.
Up to the north of that.
Yeah, his house is to the north.
On the other side of the outbuilding, so, okay.
Correct.
I mean, I drive by there every day, but it's kind of hard to visualize it from this angle.
And that, and that outbuilding is...
Yeah, but he has a barn there, you can't see.
That outbuilding is fairly tall and obstructive. It will complete, I mean, it will completely obstruct the view of ours.
So you're not anticipating any problem?
No.
Todd, another question. Does the paneling meet code for this area?
Um, that's a great question.
There isn't any design standards for the area.
Okay.
The answer is yes.
He had a few others, but I think they were asked and answered, so we should be good.
Okay. So, yeah, no decision, just more of just information so that you know if and when we make this happen, it'll be coming back to the council for approval, so...
Hey, Nathan.
Okay, so, you know, one of the things that we always look forward to come November, December, is a window for us to catch up, clean off a desk, file some things. And we start, we start looking ahead. So this time we started looking ahead, and we all went, oh, no. And we realized that we have about two weeks, maybe a week, to try to do some of that, some of that work. So we, and we quickly realized that our next four months of next year, even all the way up till June, is loaded with a lot of decisions and key decisions, and even some big decisions that the council has to make. So we put together a graphic for you to start discussions on some of the things that we have to do. And Kurt, this, I sent you this email, so you have it via email also, so you can look at that. Really, as you look at this, we tried to break it down by what the lead department is. Obviously, there's a lot of overlap, and there's a lot of assistance that everybody's going to be working on, like utility rate study, that'll involve public works, it'll involve finance, it'll involve administration as we do those. The yellow stars represent meetings or council decision points, or when bids are going to be due, or things like that. Green are other key times that are key kickoffs, like if you look down at 6800 West, we expect bidding in, in the second half of January, although that won't come before the council, that would, a good, because that's funded through MAG, that's a good project timeline for you. The, so just a, a couple of things, and the reason we wanted to have this discussion is in order for us to work with you and, and help you through this process and through these key decisions, and to be successful in the coming months, especially that first quarter, or the first six months, is we are going to have to be able to work together, work closely, have laser focus, for lack of a better description, be able to communicate well, responding to emails, responding to texts, vice versa, both staff and council, meeting together when we need, need to, making sure that things are clear and concise. If we have questions, sitting down, going over them, especially when it comes to the budget, comes to utility rates, things of that nature that can be, that are new, that can be complicated, or things like that. We really want to help you and help understand, help you understand what the key issues are, the key aspects to the decisions that you'll be making. If we do a lot of what I call spinning our wheels, and, and we can't, we want, we want to get you the information so you can make a decision, but what we don't want to do is we don't want to delay or put off decisions unnecessarily, because if we do that, we're going to get behind in timelines, we're going to get behind in the things that we need to accomplish, and not be able to move forward. And everybody's going to look at each other and be frustrated and wonder what happened. So, as we know, right? At the end of the day. So the goal here is just to give you a update on where we are and where we intend on going, a little bit about the workload that we have. It's a pretty heavy lift that we have going on. And, and we, and we're at a point where we don't have a lot of capacity for some big large other projects. I know I'm missing things in here that we want, that we've talked about in the past. I know Parks and Trails are looking at some things that we may have to bring back in and get some consultants or other folks to help us out with, that kind of thing. But generally speaking, this kind of gives you a good snapshot of where we are. Now, this is interpretation according to me and my thinking, and you probably have a lot of questions about what this means, so I'll be happy to answer those, so I can regurgitate what this means.
So I've got a couple of quick questions.
Yeah.
So I just need explanation. What is Broadleaf Channel?
Okay, so that is the drainage channel up by...
County College. That's the County College, the drainage...
County College area, up by 11800 North. It goes from 11800 North south to, how far, Todd? About a half mile or a mile south?
This is the ongoing...
Yes, the ongoing issue.
Issue there, okay. I just, I didn't recognize that. Okay, I understand that.
I have the same.
And wildland fire expense on it.
Okay, so...
I've never heard of that.
Yes, that's a new one. We do, the Lone Peak Public Safety Fire Department does deployments out to California, primarily in other states, as a way to raise revenue for capital expenditures, things like that. We've been asked to look at the expenditure and revenue side of that to see if, how that balance sheet is, include depreciation of vehicles, time away, all that kind of thing. So we're working with our orders to get a proposal from them to help us with that task. But that's one thing that we're, we're looking in moving forward. It's been helpful in some ways, but we want to make sure that, you know, the cost to the district, short and long term, makes sense moving forward.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. I just, on this general fund capital needs analysis, I mean, most of these things, you have a little kind of shaded in area, which means you're working on those things, but there's no shaded in area on that. Is that...
Correct.
What does that mean? It just goes...
That means we haven't planned that one out.
Okay.
But can we, so on, on that one, I'm just looking, I started looking after I heard Todd's comments at the first of them meeting. I would love it if we could go back to, and I've said this before, go back to the general fund plan that we spent lots of money, I think, it was before I was on the council, but having drawn up, that goes through very specifically what all of like Todd's needs are. I mean, it says on here when playground equipment needs to be replaced and how much. It has on here the snowplows, it has on here the trucks. So as part of that, I would like to go through this general fund financial plan that I think cost a lot of money and that we, and that we have. Why, why don't we use this more? Like, it seems like everybody put a lot of information and a lot of time and effort putting it together, so I think we should use it.
Yeah, so if you remember, we had a work session where we discussed that particular study and general fund in general as it relates to that. That does have some, but it was more of a Band-Aid approach and didn't include everything. And, and we looked at trying to update that and trying to be more comprehensive, and that's what that needs analysis was trying to do. That was the direction at that time.
Yeah, and I think it would be good to like look through. I mean, all these things have like urgency and how high of a need they, we think they are. I think we should revisit it.
So the, so the question, the question that I would have for the council... So the question, the question that I would have for the council is if there's, how does that fall in with the urgency of these other items to complete? And which ones, what order would you have us complete these? Because we can't, does that make sense?
Right, but I would think what Brittany is saying is, I think we need to look at that quite a bit before we start talking about local and state tax increases and RAMP tax and all that stuff, because those tax increases are going to be contingent on this other, isn't it? If we, as we look at our needs.
Don't disagree. No, disagree. When we say the state, as we've talked about before, we may face a mandate that we have to change-
From the state.
-our, some of our fees to a tax.
Sure.
That's what that refers. The local is if the council chose to raise revenue through a tax increase.
Sure.
So those are the two different ones on those.
So what does the green and the gold mean?
So the gold are, would be council action, kind of meeting, decision type thing, like, and the green is something else driving that, another organization, another thing that we do, is do like a bid through MAG for 6800 West, something like that.
Where you see a gold star, that would mean that agenda would have, that is an item of some kind.
Yeah, for example.
Whether it's a work session or a-
For example, if you talk about open space moratorium, if we're going to extend that, we need to do that at the second meeting in January, no later than that.
Okay. Well, Nathan, I really appreciate you're doing this. This is very visual and it's good to start looking at this. I appreciate the work you've done on this, because that was a lot of work, so.
Yes. So we just have to be on board to buckle up and do our homework, so that we can have further meetings and-
This is more, we're not looking for anything we need from you. This is just a heads up that, hey, we got a lot to do, and we're going to be throwing a lot of stuff at you in the next little while, and we're going to need, you know, what kind of time commitment can you do? You know, we're looking at work sessions, multiple of them. You know, in the coming months, talk about utility rates, you know, we're looking at meetings for impact fees, things like that. And when we push communication out, we're going to need responses. When we're in council meetings and work sessions, we need to be efficient, and things like that.
Specific to that, I'm open to any suggestions for how to make our meetings more efficient. So do we put time estimates for items and try to adhere to those, or do we just put a, say we're going to be done at 10 and then back out and-
I think time estimates for each item, just so that we don't end up spending all of our time on one item. But also, I think that ice cream as a prize at the end really works well.
That was effective, I'll grant you that. Okay, I actually have been estimating times, and I'm trying to compare my estimates versus reality. And today's meeting, we're a half hour ahead of where I thought we'd be, so we're doing good. The last meeting, I think I was a half hour behind, so my ability to estimate is getting better, so. Anyway, any other comments on this? So my next meeting is January 5th. That means we have a month off almost. It's nice.
What was that, sorry, Mayor?
It means we have a month off, but this is normal, right? We normally just do one meeting in December. It's just this one happens to be the first day of December, but that's normal. It just means we get a little bit of a break, staff doesn't have to do reports, and trust me, they, that sucks up a lot of time doing all those staff reports.
Yeah, I mean, it's a day, it's a day plus gone a week.
Yes. Anything else from council members that they'd like to talk about?
We need Christmas lights. That's right, Nathan, I'm bringing it up at the city council meeting.
So what kind of Christmas lights are you recommending?
All of them. All of the Christmas lights with music and Santa and a helicopter. Right, Kim?
Yes.
Yes.
So Erin, do you want to, you have anything to comment?
So I'm hearing this secondhand. Unfortunately, Corinne couldn't be here this evening, so secondhand conversation between, I think, Kim and the mayor, and then the mayor and Corinne, me and the mayor. Summary is, we understand that people are interested in Christmas lights, or some sort of a Christmas event, something. The general idea we've come up with at this point is, so we're limited by power, unfortunately, right, and where we have access to power. They, we have power outlets in the planters, in the southeast corner of the splash pad, in the tree planters there. There are six of them, so the idea was, because we heard there was some interest in a, like, people decorating, right? So the idea is have six designated spots that we would request your help in choosing families or groups who would be dedicated to actually decorating those. And then, so we'd have, our preference as staff would be to have a one-night event where those areas get decorated, and then we set it up similar to the trick-or-treat street where people sign up for times, we, you know, they go around, they enter one area of the park, they look at the decorations, and then they exit a different area of the park. That way, we can do contract tracing and we can space people out, so nobody ends up being six feet apart. We have the potential of maybe adding or leaving up some lights or some display. We do have a concern when we're talking about personal property, because it could get stolen at that point. And we don't really want to be or have the police department responsible for monitoring Christmas decorations. In addition, if we provide an area where people can come to view, we need to make sure that that area is user-friendly, meaning we'd have to make sure that the sidewalks are clear and things like that. So we'd propose just doing inside the park one night, and then maybe we can leave something on the, near the outside of the park, maybe through December, because it'd be easier to keep that little section of sidewalk clear than within the park, because we normally just close it off. So that's tentative plans, but very tentative at this point.
So I'd like to learn more from the councilwomen on what you would, you say we want lights, but where do you want the lights? Do you want bushes and trees decorated around the city building, or-
No, like, so what I picture is like this small town that I always went to, when I would go to my grandma's house when I was a kid, and they would have like, like decorations on the street pole, like on the-
Oh, yeah, so on the city, like American Fork does.
Yeah, and I think that Todd is looking for a project.
Yeah, he said he has time.
Yeah, and I know that a fire chief has a 14-tall foot, foot-tall ladder.
So you're talking about like what American Fork does down the main street? Is that what you're thinking?
It does make you happy. That is the proper rule of government.
Kind of decorating the city.
Make us happy by hanging up lights for our people in the city.
I mean, Draper, their Tree of Life, is amazing. Maybe you could do something at Heritage Park? I'm just naming, people have texted and emailed me about Christmas lights in Highland.
I wasn't thinking like a one-time event. I was thinking more of like a, like a thing that we always have, just like a thing.
Like a Christmas tree in the city that's decorated or something, something like that, yeah.
And to the mayor's credit, he's absolutely wanted this for a little while, and we've tried different things and haven't found something that stuck, really, I don't think, but-
And this is for me, who made a motion to get rid of Halloween, so I feel like that didn't work.
Ever happening, ever happening.
No, I like this idea, but I think it'd be nice.
What, of getting rid of Halloween?
No, well-
Oh, Christmas.
So of doing Christmas lights instead of a Christmas event, just some sort of decoration if we can figure that out.
I mean, in my head, that just is like, it's just, don't you think it's like a nice homey feel when you have, like, go into a city and there's like Christmas decorations, and they're always the same one for like 100 years? And then we all feel happy and we don't have to worry about contract tracing, which is going to be done by the next time we meet anyway, because we're all going to be vaccinated soon.
Next week?
Yes.
It starts, we hope. So is there like a tree somewhere? Is there some center part of the community that we could decorate? I've often thought it'd be nice where we have our Highland signs to have some Christmas decorations as you come in, but I don't think there's electrical outlets there. Are there, Todd? Are there any electrical outlets where we have the Highland sign coming in from American Fork or coming in from?
Todd is thinking of ways to say there's no electricity anywhere in the city, anywhere.
I have no idea, Scott.
Yeah, because, you know, it'd be fun to kind of, I don't know, as you come in the city, have a little bit of decoration, I don't know.
But you can get LED lights that have some solar powered.
Yes.
Mayor, can you talk into the mic?
Sorry, there are LED lights that are solar powered, so, you know, they power up during the day and then they run at night as long as their power lasts.
Good, and then they go off?
Yeah.
It's not a bad idea.
LED draws so much more power.
I'd support that. I think, but having some decorations as you come into Highland would be nice. Because what we basically are, are a bunch of big highways that people pass through.
What were you thinking, Kim?
Yeah, I like the main street fill. I mean, you could do Highland Alpine Highway or Highland Boulevard, just scouting areas, because, you know, I do that when I think of Christmas lights. Heritage Park has some great big trees there that would be really excellent. And this isn't saying you have to do it this year, just putting this bug in people's ears, because it does take a while to do Christmas lights. Highland Glen Daria, I know Salem has a whole pond that they do Christmas lights on the pond there. But I just think it'd be fun to bring the community together with Christmas lights.
American Fork wraps their tree trunks down by their library, which I think is really fun.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking with Heritage Park, because they've got some great big tree trunks there.
And then they decorate a big tree every year with lots of lights by their cemetery, by the Alpine School District. It looks really attractive. I mean, I don't know if there's electricity by the cemetery, but decorating a tree there, I don't know. It would be kind of fun. I mean, it's a lot of work for the staff, and we have-
It would take, some of this stuff just takes a long lead. We either have to start in September, because you have to get businesses involved. So there'll be something limited we can do this year, and please send your feedback.
Wouldn't that be a fun, like, council event, though? We could all go help decorate, and that would be a great community event.
I just heard a volunteer, I like it.
I totally volunteer my husband.
So send your requests and comments to-
My husband.
Erin, and Corinne and Erin will figure out something and get back to you.
I think about this every day when I go running.
All right. I think it'd be a nice idea, though, if we started out small. I'd be willing to decorate lights, or not decorate lights, but donate some lights.
Me too.
I would, I'd be willing to do that. We decorate a couple of big trees around our yard, and the lights are LED, they last from year to year.
We do have an expert on our city council in Christmas lights.
I'm texting Kurt.
Kurt?
He did mention we want animated lights.
Yes.
I'm not sure if that was a question or a statement. I think it was a statement.
It was probably a statement.
You want animated, you want RGBs. There's a Christmas show in June in Las Vegas I'd be willing to go to for the city.
All right.
So we'll work with Public Works to figure out where the best, where our best power source is, given kind of some visibility that we want, and start small and go from there.
But do you think there's something we do this year? Because I'd be happy to help decorate.
We do have some lights left over from previous events and previous years.
Just to decorate it, yeah.
You know, so I think that we can figure out something this year, but absolutely, I think, I think the biggest constraint, like the mayor was talking about, is time. Like, it does take a lot of time, so if you're serious about volunteering some help and some donated lights, that would be helpful to help staff, because otherwise, we're talking parks crews have to, having to do this, right? Because Corinne's only so tall, right?
Todd, just don't listen.
But if you had a small tree or something in Heritage-
Oh, hey, youth council, I think, just volunteered too.
The youth council would be helpful.
Yeah, youth council.
I saw that, and he's tall.
He is tall.
Yeah, maybe we get the youth council and the city council just to do that, decorate a tree in Heritage Park or something.
Yeah, so we'll, we will work forward to that, so.
I think we should set up a Penguin Land somewhere, that's what I think.
Yeah, and Todd is going to really use, they blew out a campaign sign.
I'll show other people how I did it before, so that I can do. You can just go to my Facebook page and look up Penguin Land. All right. Anything else before we adjourn to closed session? If not, I would entertain a motion adjourning us to closed session.
So moved.
All right, and the closed session is going to be for, to discuss pending or imminently, a reasonably imminent litigation.
Can we, while we're adjourning, can we have a bathroom break?
We can. I would insist on that. So let's, I plan on being back here about 9:30.